Okay, if we got the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And all the members are present, Ashley. Open forums, who would like to adjust the board? If not, we'll move on. Mark Grossclose, presentation.
Good evening, I have the pleasure to thank Randy Kerr. Randy was a huge, huge influence in the Minnesota Supreme Court coming to the high school. And Randy coordinated a lot of things besides just the Supreme Court coming. He also helped us coordinate lunch and some other things. So Randy's been a huge, huge asset to our students, staff, and the community, setting this up. So I really appreciate everything you did to make this happen, Randy.
Well, thank you very much, Mark. I do, I do want to say one thing. The students at Albert Lee High School were remarkable. This is just one example of what the Supreme Court justices have said. This came just last week. "I was greatly impressed by your school and the wonderful students there. Their positive attitude was a tonic during these days when the news is so negative." And that's from Justice Margaret Chudic. Just one example of how strongly they felt about the students at Albert Lee High School. And to the staff, thank you very much, Mark. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks to both of you. Does anybody have anything to add to the agenda before we do the approval? If not, I need a motion to approve today's agenda?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then a second, any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item six, consent items. Need a motion to approve the consent items. Then is there a second?
Second.
Julie, thank you, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Reports, Dr. Funk.
Just two things tonight. On Friday of this past week, had the great opportunity to go down with, with Randy and some of the local Kowanians. And Tim Penny from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. And we were able to open up, well, and we'll have to take the, the board down there, maybe one of our study sessions. But we opened up the Oasis Reading Room, which is a reading room for young students and their parents. And it's just down the hallway here. And Scholastic provides the books. And students are encouraged to read the books. And if they want to take them with them, they can, they can do that as well. So it's been discussed in Kowana, as I know, for at least two years. And this was a, just a great community example of Sean Braunlow, a local high school senior. As part of his Eagle Skull project, painted the room with some help, some help from his friends and got the furniture all set up. And so great success story there. And again, we'll have to look at the room at a, at a future time. The other thing that I just want to make the board aware of tonight is, we are, at Albert Lee High School, we do a program, an online ACT program called John Baylor Prep. And it's to help our, our students prepare for the ACT. So I was at a conference last week and I ran into the folks from John Baylor Prep. And they said, "In addition to the ACT work, John Baylor is the radio announcer for the University of Nebraska's volleyball team. And they are playing at the University of Minnesota on Wednesday night." And they said, "Let's talk to John. He's flying in on Tuesday. And if he's interested and available, would you like him to come down and talk to your staff?" So they're picking him up at the hotel in the Twin Cities at 5:00 on Wednesday morning. And he's coming down to talk to the high school staff during their PLC time on, on Wednesday, Wednesday morning. And so the administration will chance, have a chance to meet with him afterwards. But his, one of his real emphasis is the importance of ACTs, not only to get into college, but if you get higher ACT scores, they help with the financial aid portion of it considerably. So looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Student members. Take turns and maybe, Kayla, you can use Lori's mic if you need to.
Okay, so as of now, we don't have really too much to report. We just had the musical last weekend and that was really received greatly by our community. We had a full house on Saturday night and I don't think that's happened in years. Besides that, our email is up and running, but we haven't really had any response to it yet. So I've been trying to brainstorm some ways of how to maybe get people a little more involved and active into it. But I'll keep you guys updated.
Have they, have they announced that on like Tiger Vision and?
I added in the school newsletter.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, let us know if we can help. All right, school board member reports. And I'm going to respectfully ask that we maintain our comments to our activities as school board members. Dave, you want to go first?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, had, and I didn't count, but I had numerous comments, Lori. And that is reporting that everyone was very happy that you decided to stay with our school district. And Justine, that was an awesome play. I will have to say, I made it Thursday night and I think about filled it up, that you and the entire group did an amazing job. And it's just a really great opportunity only, not only to see people you know, but just to see what our school is doing for our students with the Fall Musical Greece. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe there was a curriculum committee meeting. I haven't attended one this year. I don't know if there has been one this year or not.
There was on Thursday night.
There was, okay, I didn't get a notice, so I'll look for the next one. There was no Family Services Collaborative Meeting or ACE's meeting this month. Although I did, in the end of October, I attended the showing of the Paper Tigers Documentary, which was held at the Freeborn County Historical Museum. That was a great showing and they'll be showing it again in the coming, in the coming months. I also have received a few complaints and I have brought those forward. Thank you.
For the Monday, is it December, help me out, December 5th? Monday, December, our next meeting, December 5th. We will have the Truth in Taxation meeting, which will start at 6:00. And that's when the, that's when the school board meeting is at 6:00. So don't come at 5:00, it's going to be at 6:00. And it has to be at 6:00 because that's the time that's on our tax statements. So we can't do it at 5:00. And then immediately following that, at 6:15, we will have the required levy approval meeting. So it's not at 5:00, it's at 6:00. And those will be the only two items for that night. So 6:00 and 6:15. Okay. 8.1, approval of the Modified Albert Lee Schools Executive Director of Finance and Operations Association, 2014 to 17 Master Agreement. Dr. Funk.
My recommendation is that we modify Lori Volz's current contract and our future contract. And I'll get into the requested modification here in a minute. But this is just one slide tonight. 3.83, 3.38 million interest saved for taxpayers on HVAC systems. 1.1 million refinancing our high school bond. Those are all good things on the left side. You've seen some of the things on the right. But the thing I really wanted to draw your attention to is like the fourth bullet on the right there. The district is currently receiving 1.1 million dollars in competitive grants for the 2016-17 school year, where we compete with school districts throughout the state of Minnesota for funding from the Department of Education. You know, a lot of this up on the slide talks about Lori's savings. But a significant part of the 1.1 million is her mentoring of Mary Jo Dormand and Jennifer Hansen within our, our district so that we can provide the best grant applications possible to get this money. And if we did not have Lori in this capacity, those dollars, which are competitive, would be at risk in the future. And so my recommendation to the board tonight is twofold. The first one is, we have a Special Education Cooperative with Austin, which is a 1.9 million dollar budget, which Lori and Sarah Cluckell to some degree, now Tammy Elves, got up off the ground and running from the, from the legal and the financial part of it, with no additional compensation. So I'm asking the board to, to increase or to add a stipend, as long as we are part of that cooperative and we are managing that, that close to $2 million budget, that Lori be given a stipend of $10,000 to, to run that cooperative. At least the management side of the finances. The second thing is, we want to keep Lori here long-term in the district. We heard the community loud and clear on that issue. And so the second piece that I'm asking, recommending to the board tonight is that we compensate her $10,000 towards a retirement annuity of her choice into the future. And that's my recommendation to you. Thank you.
A motion and a second, and then we can have discussion. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, is there a second? Thanks, Dave, discussion?
So what would be the total increase then in package?
$20,000.
And percentage-wise?
I don't have that in front of me.
I did some of my own figures and it looks like, to me, just with the, the pay rate and the stipends, it looks like almost 18% over the year prior.
Any other, Julie?
I have a question. Okay. So a question I had about the stipend for the Special Ed Co-op. Are there others who are doing additional work, like in the staffing side? Or in the coordination side, like the Special Ed Director, who are receiving stipends for additional work?
The Special Ed Director was going to be receiving a stipend before she left. So I rolled it into the new salary of the new director coming in. It's not, it's not, it's not in there as a separate stipend.
Okay. And are there any other staff who are doing additional duties for the co-op?
Those are the two primary ones. Lori, you can speak to any others in your office on our side?
Primarily, it's, it's been myself at the financial end, working closely with the Special Ed Director in our district, yep.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. And that's an annual, $20,000 annual, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Those were my questions. I just wanted to comment that I think Lori saw the level of support we have for her. But from a taxpayer perspective, I think we would be hard pressed to find a lot of taxpayers who would be supportive of a $20,000 increase per year. I feel that's excessive and that taxpayers wouldn't be supportive of that. So just wanted to make that comment.
All right, I don't know what's going on with my mic. Other discussion?
Just one comment.
Yes.
You know, the $20,000, I don't see it as excessive, considering the amount of money that Ms. Volz has been saving the district and also been saving our taxpayers. So I, I honestly, I don't see it as being excessive.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second, no further discussion, all in favor, aye? Aye? As opposed?
Aye.
So a motion carries forward to 8.2. Approval of the Albert Lee Schools Executive Director of Finance, 2017 to 20 Master Agreement. Mike?
Just the, the same recommended compensation from the current contract. No other changes from the one that you approved in, it's the same contract you approved two months ago, with the additional $10,000 stipend and the initial $10,000 towards retirement.
Okay, so the same thing, we'll take a motion to approve that. A second? Thank you, a discussion? Jill?
I've received community feedback as well about appreciating the financial contributions, but not in favor of adding a substantial amount to salary.
Other discussion?
One other comment. I just think we as a board need to be cognizant of that this sets a precedent. And so is the board prepared to do this then for others as well? With a precedent-setting action such as this?
Other comments or questions? No other discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries forward to 8.3. Audit Summary. Lori and Greg Larson. And we have a copy of the audit executive report, which is this Maroon folder.
Thank you. I had a chance to meet with the Finance Committee, excuse me, at 4:00. My name is Greg Larson, I worked with the school district for a few years. You can see the audit reports here, it's 88 pages. A year ago, Lori Volz asked if I could do something called an executive summary. It's 15 pages. So we spent in half, half an hour, went through the report very quickly. And so I get, I think, eight minutes tonight. So she said, I think the information here will be useful. If you have any questions as we go through, feel free to ask questions. This is pretty much a summary of the main points in the audit report. I'm going to start off page one here. It shows the, the main pieces from the audit opinion. The financial statements are fairly stated. That's what we call a clean opinion or a clean audit report, that's what you want. There are no findings over the internal control, over financial reporting, no compliance issues with the yellow book or single audit. And also no findings with Minnesota legal compliance. We have certain items we have to test for when we do a school audit to see if you're in compliance with certain Minnesota requirements. And the extracurricular student activity funds, the state in the last few years has spent more time having us look at these. And this is also clean. We didn't have any findings related to your student activity counts here either. The next page is just a brief internal control letter. And these are just some minor comments, they don't, they are not in the audit report. You can see how big these are. We just mentioned that you had one outstanding check. It was not a very big check, if I remember correctly. It's in the student act, student athletic account that was outstanding for more than a year. And we just recommend the district just avoid those out if they're more than a year old. Because most likely, if it's that old, it probably won't be clearing a student activity count. Your district is already doing a lot of these things here. Just a reminder that the state again is pushing some of these things. The district, we recommend the district use a deposit receipt summary form and the check request form to reconcile the fundraiser accountability report form. So there's some new forms. The district does have some forms in place and so they are watching. This is just a reminder there. So nothing big there. The next page is a communication with those charged with governance. Some auditors combined this as the internal control letter. This is just a general report that we're supposed to give to the board. Significant audit findings or policies. We're not aware of any new accounting policies as far as the major changes in the audit. No transactions entered in the, into the year without a lack of authoritative guidance. And all the significant transactions have been recorded in the right year. Accounting estimates, there's two estimates that we have to deal with each year. And that's the estimates for the receivable for general education aid and state special ed aid. And we did look at those. You don't really get a clean number on that till March of next year. So we have the best estimates there. Difficulties, we had no significant difficulties. We didn't have any difficulties working with your staff. This is AICPA language, so I pretty much stick to the letter. Corrected, non-corrected misstatements, we didn't have any uncorrected misstatements. Working with your finance person here, she doesn't like uncorrected misstatements. So if we find anything, even if it's a small item, she wants it corrected. And so your district has always done that. Disagreements with management, again, we, we explained what a disagreement is, but we didn't have any disagreements with your staff. Management representations on page four, just stating that on November 17th, when I went through the preliminary draft copy of the audit report with Lori Volz, there's a representation letter she signed on behalf of the district, saying she didn't forget to tell the auditors something really important. She wasn't aware of any issues pending that needed to be disclosed that were not already disclosed. Management consultation with other independent accountants. We're just saying this really doesn't apply because you had a clean opinion. There's no reason to go out and shop to find someone that would give you a clean opinion because you already have that. Other audit findings or issues. This just states that Lori Volz or some of the staff may call and ask us a question. We assume you want the correct answer. We're not trying to guess which way the district wants us to answer that question so we can be in good terms. Other matters, this is just saying that there's some other information in the report here for your information. And then the restriction on the use. So this is for the school board members and management of the district. And so this is pretty much for your, your use here. The rest of the report deals with some financial trends in the district that Lori Volz thought would be interesting. We have some, page six just shows you some information just on the general fund, showing the, how this year went for just your general fund. And it's broken apart into the different pieces. The first column would be your unrestricted and assigned and non-spendable funds. So you can see that you had revenues and expenses. You, you actually improved a little bit in this area. The same with non-capital restrictions. Operating capital, you did spend down on that piece. And then the health and safety actually improved a little bit. So overall, the district was close to break even. You took in $334,830 more than you spent. So basically, the district did hold its own. This year, and has a nice fund balance at the end of the year. On page eight, I show the district numbers for the past five years and what the food service fund balance has been. And so you can see that it dropped for a couple of years, but now you're back up again. A nice fund balance. The community service fund there shows that, that you have $199,438 fund balance at the end of 2016. And that was, there was a planned spend down in this fund. You still have nice fund balances in all the community service fund reserves. Page 10, we have a, a graph here that shows you the general fund revenue and where the pieces come from. And the biggest piece you can see is coming from state sources. 83% of your revenue for the general fund comes from state sources. And then the, the local, local property tax piece would be the next one, 10%. Federal source and others, pretty small piece of the pie. So most of your funding is coming from the state of Minnesota. And then starting on, on the next graph we have here, this is some different categories of expenses for the past five years. And then the column on the right, might be hard to see on the screen here, but in your books, it should be easy to see. We have the 2015 statewide averages for all schools. It isn't just schools of your size, but all schools in the state of Minnesota. The 2016 numbers aren't out yet, so the best we could do is the 2015. So you can see that, that the numbers have grown a little bit just with inflation. But that you are under the statewide average for district and school administration and support services. This is for average daily membership for, for per student cost. The next area is regular instruction. So this one shows that the numbers here for the past five years for your district. And again, showing the statewide average, so you're slightly above. But that's why you're here, is for the education of your students, vocational instruction. Same kind of thing, it shows that you're a little bit above the state average there on a cost per student. Special education costs. And we reviewed this with Lori Volz a year ago and she knew this was the case, that your district cost has been running more than the statewide average here. And that's something she's looked at. There, it's hard to control a lot of these costs because you have state mandates for a lot of these things. But that's your history here compared to the statewide average. Instructional support costs. Again, a little bit under the statewide average here. Sites, buildings, equipment and other. And so your, your cost is under the statewide average here. Pupil support services. Again, under the statewide average. I mean, slightly over. You had been under, but the last couple of years, it has come up a little bit. Transportation, this one surprised me a little bit because you do have a lot of rural area to your district and your cost is actually slightly under the, your costs are a little above, but you do have a lot of rural area here. So that, I thought you might be even a little bit more higher than that. Food service, again, very close to the statewide average. You're slightly below for the prior year. 520 compared to 525. And then the debt service one, I thought you'd find this interesting because nobody likes to have debt. I was raised in Freeborn County, so my dad did not like debt. And I know U.S. Goldborne members don't like that. But this, I thought, was encouraging to see where you are on a per student number. With the, the Finance Committee, we got a chance to look at your, your debt and the, and the payment schedule. So I think that this is a favorable number in your report there. I went through that very quickly. Probably did use all my eight minutes, it didn't feel like it. But I don't know if there's any questions there. The part we did go over with the Finance Committee is your general fund balance has been very steady. And over, I've done school audits for quite a number of years and usually there's a trend and it's hard to keep it even like you've done this past five years. Because usually what trend is, you go up and down. You don't, it's hard to keep that fund balance in your general fund the same. But you've been able to keep that for the last five years pretty even. So I, I, my feeling is that the district did have a good year. Fund balances are, are hanging in there nicely. So, and I do appreciate the staff here. I thank the staff for working with us. And I do have respect for your staff. I think you do have a good staff.
Thanks, I have a question. What, on the food service fund balance, I don't know if it's for you or Lori, how does the chart wells affect? Is that why it was so low one year and then goes back up? Or is that, is this unrelated? Is the balance unrelated to our chart wells?
Basically, chart wells, what they do for us is they give us a profit guarantee. But then we make local decisions that bite into that profit. So for example, when we have a year of higher severance pay, which we experienced that most recently when we had some retirements. And also when we purchase such things as equipment. Those are the kinds of factors that bite into our profit level. So we did experience some of that this last year. And even with that, we still did make a profit.
Okay. And then my other question is, is there, is there a difference between non-spendable and restricted?
Yeah, there is. Non-spendable would be such as your food service fund has non-spendable. The inventory, they're saying that's not cash. And so a couple of years ago, they came up with this term called non-spendable money. So it's part of your fund balance, but it's a non-spendable prepaid. So it's part of your fund balance, but it's a non-spendable prepaid. It might be in that same category. You've got some deposits out there, but when I think of non-spendable, normally that would be like your food service inventory.
Okay. I'd like to get that on my home budget with my daughters.
[laughing]
Sounds good. Other questions or comments for Greg or Lori?
Just, just one thing, Lori, back on the chart well deal, you know, I always like to ask those questions. So basically, in a sense, they were kind of, basically, instead of, that we're cash renting from them in a sense. They're going to guarantee us profit, and then anything we want to spend, I mean, I'm talking farming terms, now I'm going out to tile, that comes out of my profits. So do they, is there a base number that each district gets that they work with? Is it a percentage, or how does that work?
Basically, it depends on how you wrote the bid specs. When we go through that bid process to hire chart wells. So basically, my approach has been, I do not indicate an amount for equipment. I make that a decision year by year that we make locally, rather than having it being, you know, that we're tied fast into making an equipment expense through the bid process. So that's just the way I've handled it. Some districts may handle that slightly different, but that way it gives us the flexibility year by year. Does that help?
Great. Other questions? All right, Greg, we thank you and your firm for your work again. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to then the approval, 8.4, Lori.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Funk, for your approval would be the audit ending June 30th, 2016.
Does it need a motion to approve the audit that we just received?
So moved.
For a second.
Second.
Okay. Bill, a second. Discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Then 8.5, review of policy, 714, the fund balance, Lori.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Funk, I am recommending that the fund balance policy remain at the 14%, which we've had that for quite a few years. The finances are such that we can continue at that level, and it's a good, solid policy level.
Okay. We'll do a motion in a second. We have a discussion. So is there a motion to approve the fund balances Lori just stated?
So moved.
For a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Bill?
When the fund balance policy was put into place, it started off at 16%. And I know we're only showing five years, you know, in this report. Was it three years or four years that we had it established at 16%? And then we moved it down to 14?
I'm just going off memory. I think it was a couple of years maybe that we had it at 16%. Yeah.
My point is, you know, not only have we been able to establish a solid fund balance policy and then adhere to it, but it was at 16% at one time, and because of the discipline, we were able to move it down to 14. So I just want to say thank you for that continued discipline for.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to 8.6, the naming of the Albert Lee High School Gymnasium, Max Jeffrey and Jim Haney. And just to remind the board, naming of district facilities, there's a policy, and we, I guess we can send the policy out, and it's on the website, so you could look it up. And they're going to bring us some information about a plan that they have for the gymnasium. So it's our, our chance to ask questions, to see if we wanted to bring back something different before we would be asked to vote on it. Is that your two understanding?
Yep, that's our understanding.
Jim?
All right. Is it good? Yep. All right, very good. Thank you, school board members, students, school board members, Ms. Volz, Dr. Funk, for allowing us this time to, to talk about a very special man in my life, Max's life, and a lot of students' lives. And we're talking about Ori Jurley. And so what we're proposing to you tonight is to name our high school gymnasium, the Ori Jurley Gymnasium. Ori was a difference maker in the lives of students and staff, and I miss him every day. I have his obituary up in my room, and I look at it quite often because he is the man that was the spirit of that high school for so many years. And he made me a better teacher and a better man because he, he was a part of Albert Lee High School. And you can see his, some of the things that we want to propose here is that we want to call it the Ori Jurley Gymnasium. We're going to have a plaque in the upper level, signage near the concession stand where the windows are, where people kind of look out in the upper floor, and it'll say Ori Jurley Gymnasium. And then right where the men and women that play basketball, volleyball, whatever, for Albert Lee, we're going to paint an OJ on the floor. And kind of his spirit kind of will come up from the floor and hopefully be in our young players and their spirit, or his spirit will be with them as they compete with good sportsmanship and those type of things. We're looking to do this on February 25th, 2017. It's an Albert Lee-Austin basketball game. Ori was from Austin, Minnesota, so we thought that was appropriate. I'll turn it over to Max for specifics on the proposal.
You got this one too.
Oh, I got this one too. I'm sorry. So a little bit about Ori, if you don't know who he is, he's an amazing man, or was an amazing man. And he was 28 years in Albert Lee School District. He taught some in Rochester and a little bit in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. He was a school counselor, and he was kind of a Renaissancean man. He was also a musician, which Max will talk about in a little bit. He was head basketball coach for 14 years, head tennis coach for a number of years. He had three Big Nine championships. You can see the dates up there. And probably his most famous game was his last game, where he lost in five overtimes in the section or region final. His record is up there, 165 wins and 108 losses. And he was the face of Albert Lee Basketball for that period of time. And I'll turn it over to Max.
As you can see, excuse me, Ori was involved after he retired as a substitute teacher. Oftentimes, you'd find Ori at boys and girls basketball games, but before that, he would be officiating the youth ninth grade games. He would also do youth traveling team officiating. He was a member of two community orchestras, one here, one in Austin. Numerous alumni, he had weddings where he played for their weddings and for funerals as well. One of the, excuse me, one of the greatest things at Albert Lee High School is Ori would come and play for us during the holiday season. And you could, he would line up above the tiger and play, and, and many people would join in to sing. And it was, it was a wonderful and festive day when he was there. And Ori was also a member, an active member at St. Theodore's Church. So here's kind of what we want to get going here. We want to make this sustainable, and here's how we're going to do it. We want to establish the Ori Jurley Scholarship Fund. We want to set up criteria with a family and a committee of people to do that. We want to have a Jurley Jamboree. It's basically an Everly basketball day at the Ori Jurley Gymnasium, and we want to make this an annual event. We've brainstormed many ideas, and we want to create a boys and girls youth basketball game throughout the day from fourth grade through varsity. So we'd run fourth grade, fifth grade, and so on. And then the, either the girls would play first or the boys would play first at the varsity night. The day is run strictly by volunteers. And what we've done is talked to Afton, Walkholz, the activities director about this, and both the boys and girls boosters are on board, which sometimes is very tough to get boosters on board, to do something together. And I've been able to talk to both of them to help us out. Our goal is to earn the gate receipts to fund the scholarship and the basketball programs on that day. Again, this is a sustainable mission we're after, to help our students with scholarships through the Jurley Jamboree. That's very brief. I've given you copies of the proposals. You can see those, you can read over those as well. But if you have any questions, we'll certainly take those anytime.
I do remember Ori Jurley. I haven't lived here that long, but I do remember him. I think it's an awesome, awesome way to tribute, to recognize him. My only question is, has anyone brought up the OJ, as in OJ Simpson on the floor? I don't know, I'm sorry, but I'm just kind of one of those people who, when I see OJ, I don't think of orange juice, I think of the juice. So that's just my only question. I'm, I'm very in support of this, but that's my question.
Right. And so we did talk about that, and that was one of the things we did talk about. Hopefully with the signage that we have around, that OJ Simpson's not the person that will be honoring, but Mr. Jurley and so forth. So yes, it was talked about.
Maybe a little bit of violence, especially to OJ.
That's a good idea, yeah.
It really is. Other questions? I know one of the, the policy, there is some verbiage about a significant, and that's not defined, financial contribution to the district. And have you thought about that, and what does that mean to your group? We don't have a definition, it's just that word out there, significant.
And I think we spoke to Dr. Funk a couple of months ago on this. One thing you'll notice is all the signage is paid for by private funds, so that's, that's taken care of. I talked to Kevin Peake at the high school about installation, and he was, be more than happy to help us out in any way possible, so that's cool. I think what we want to do for this is, the significance is the scholarship funds for students. And I think if you know Ori, he would want to give back to students in any way he could. And so I think with the committee and family members that I'm still close to, I think we can find that and fund that way to give back to students, whether it's athletics, music. And Ori really had a connection with our special ed students. And if you'll, you'll see in the, in the documents that I've given you, there's a recommendation, a couple of recommendations in there, and just how he spoke to Ori about the kids and the connections he would make. So that would be our contribution. Significant or not, I do think it's significant. I've a story I told Jim today. Ori used to substitute teach a lot, and he would come into my room some days and say, can you help me with the VCR? I don't know where, I don't know where the button's at, what channel I have to be on? That was one of the situations. But I was very fortunate to, to see Ori the day before he died. He was scheduled to substitute teach, and there was a mix-up in subs somehow, and he could have gone home, or he could have gone to coffee at Hy-Vee. He came to shake my hand to wish me luck before the game that day, and he made the rounds like he normally would. And that's the kind of guy he was. And that's what we wanted to get across to the students of Everly High School, his passion, his commitment. Significant funds, I hope that's significant for you to realize that this is important. Again, there is no set, there's nothing in the policy that says what is significant. We don't know that. But this is our way to, to give back in Ori's honor.
Very nice. Other question? Again, the purpose was, I think there was a February date, right?
Yes.
So, you know, it would be to come back, and I'm assuming you need time in December, maybe at December meeting, to have this approved. So the, again, the chance up here now, is there anything else you'd like to hear different when they come back in December? Yeah, Bill?
You know, I was one of those that played for Ori, and just want to mention it, was that '77, '78 team. Okay. But I rode the bench, but still an important player. And I have to just tell you, Ori called me up, I was a senior at the time, and he said, I, you know, I can't get this, this lamp to work. Could you come out and see what you could do? So I went out there and checked it. It was plugged in, so he got step one done. The light switch was on, he got step two. And I asked him, did you replace the bulb? And I said, yeah. I said, I, you know, grabbed it out of the box and screwed it in, and it still didn't work. And he said, are you sure that that one works? And so we took one from another light that was shining, and we put that in, and it was lo and behold, it was working. So that's my Ori Jurley story as far as electronics, so.
Right.
But no, Ori was, he, he was a force in this community, a force with his players. I know the impact that he had on myself and as well as on a lot of other players. I think you're selling yourself short if you don't make a phone call to a few, if not a half a dozen to a dozen, that I think you would see a significant resources come to play. So, you know, I can think of about six right off the top of my head that would have the ability to and probably the desire to contribute at a, at a high level. So I would encourage you to do that.
I'll be calling you tomorrow.
Yeah, I know that. I knew that it was coming. So, but I, you know, I will give you those names and phone numbers.
Thanks, Bill. Other comments or questions? Julie?
I too was a student when Ori was at the high school as a counselor, and he was a difference maker. I wasn't a basketball player, but he knew everyone. He knew all the kids. He knew what you were involved in, and he always made time for everyone. I also graduated with his son, Ted, and so knew, knew the family very well. And I know the class that I graduated with was '87 with Ted, and there are many, many basketball players in that class too, who absolutely will contribute if you reach out to those folks. And so I'm supportive 100% of this, that he was a wonderful man and really, truly made a huge difference in the lives of the people he knew, students and otherwise.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, we'll look for you in December then.
Thank you.
Second meeting. All right, yeah, thanks for coming. 8.7, review of policies, Jim.
Good afternoon. There we go. Good afternoon. There are, yeah, it's about a three-second delay from the time you hit your button, is what I've figured out, so. There are three policies for final reading tonight, policy 201, 215, and 902. And that means that we're at the point with final reading that action would be appropriate here. So policy 201, legal status of the school board and final reading, there were no changes from the last time that the second reading happened for 201, so I won't, I won't go over it again, but there's no changes from the last, from the second reading.
Any questions about that?
I have some. Roman numeral four speaks about, if you can hear me, Roman numeral four speaks about the question that was on the ballot. Do we need to change the wording in that to be more specific since that passed for
Yeah, we could, we just put effective.
No, it's for the next two years, you have six members. So I would, next time you review this policy, I would go with, with that until the seventh takes their seat.
And then I still have the previous concern that I had expressed before about whether or not this was actually a necessary policy. We need to create policy for good reason and, and not just have more paperwork on hand. I am questioning the need for it, and I know, Mr. Chair, you gave a hypothetical example last time we discussed it. But in reviewing the Code of Ethics, policy 209, there's actually a provision in there that accomplishes, I believe, the same thing. 209, Roman numeral two, CII, recognize that authority rests with the school board in legal session, not with the individual members of the school board as authorized by law. I know we haven't been paying a lot of attention to the Code of Ethics recently. It's right between small letter I, respect the rights of others to have and express opinions, and between I, 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 make no disparaging remarks, but that is provided for in the Code of Ethics already. I don't see the need for the policy itself, and I am concerned, as I have expressed before, that it is only limiting to, to the school board. And I know when it was first brought to us, it was alluded that there were problems happening in the district. There was no information brought forward about that, except that, an innuendo, I guess, that it was too many questions were being asked. So I know I have asked before if this is going to preclude board members being able to ask questions outside of this boardroom. And I do have a board-related question that's going on for, for months now, that has not been answered. So I guess in that aspect too, if my questions already are not being answered, why do we need this in order to limit it? So I am concerned about the need for this policy and the intention of this policy. And I, I guess I don't have a solid answer as to why, why we need this if it's already provided for in the Code of Ethics. Thank you.
Other comments? Julie?
I know, excuse me, I had had a conversation with you, Mark, about I know, excuse me. I had had a conversation with you, Mark, about this, that I too feel like this is redundant. I don't understand either why we need this policy. Our role is defined by statute. And then the board ethics policy that lays out the other pieces of our role as board members. So it just seems like we already have this in place. And I don't understand why we need another separate policy.
So the policy committee have any comments about that or no? I do, Julie, I was confused. As you may notice, 206 isn't on the list. And that's the one that we took off.
Right. But I had asked you about this policy.
Again, my apologies, but 206 is the one I was concerned about, too, about some of the legal language. So, and that's why it's not on the list today. Other comments about 201? So we need a motion to approve 201?
I guess I have one more question. I mean, you already asked the policy committee if they had anything to add. But what is the purpose of adding this policy according to the policy committee?
Dave or Linda? Yeah? No comment. Dave?
I think it's just a matter of clarification and maybe tightening up some of the expectations that you've had recently.
Oops, sorry.
I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries forward to 8.7.2. Jim?
District policy number 215, videotaping of board meetings. This also is the third reading. There has been no change to this policy as well. Would note that there was some discussion about posting a sign here in the boardroom besides the verbiage that you see there, that there could be constant taping during a board meeting that was brought up. But that was not put in here as part of the policy.
So let's do a motion to approve in a second, then we can discuss. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Okay, no discussion? Jill?
Yes. I find it interesting that we found this policy out of Sag Harbor, New York, a tiny, tiny little place there that must have had some of the same issues that we have had, poor district. My questions would have to do with Roman numeral two, A definitions. The last sentence there, videotaping will not include breaks or recesses. I think that's kind of in contradiction to what Mr. Querem just said would be in our notice. So I don't know if that really relates to what happens here, because sometimes there could be videotaping during breaks or recesses.
As I see that language, that I see it as we're stating that it will not include that, but we're making a warning to the people that are in this room that potentially that recorder is still on. So we want you just to be aware of it, but it's not our intent to do that. So this is covering us with regards to the language that will be in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess to me, it's just the opposite. It's leaving us open. We're saying videotaping will not include breaks or recesses. I have a problem with that sentence. Also guidelines, start with guideline D. It speaks about anyone who believes they have been defamed will provide written notification. The superintendent has power to remove the video. And then it sounds to me, if I'm understanding this correctly, that only the board would then have authority to authorize any edits to any videotaping. Is that correct?
I don't believe it says that. But any person who believes that she or he has been defamed at a board meeting shall provide a written notification to the board chair, superintendent of schools, immediately upon learning of such actions in order to provide the school board the opportunity to discuss possible edits. The superintendent of schools shall be authorized to remove the specific video from the website pending board review of the concern. Therefore, after the board may determine which portions, if any, of a video recording of a public board meeting will not be made available on the district's website. Okay? So we will edit the tapes. We edit every tape by adding slides to the tapes ahead of time. This does not say we don't have the ability to edit tapes. This is granting the superintendent the ability to take something down if somebody says that they've been defamed. And the board can discuss at a later date.
Right. And since we have come upon this problem before, I would like to be really specific. So this says, the superintendent of schools may remove the video as a whole as in it's pre-edited for formatting content, may remove that. And then the board, that's pending the board review, and the board determines which pieces would be edited due to possible defamation, correct? Thank you. And then in letter E, that's small print about there won't be any unauthorized rebroadcasting of the video, audio, or still image. I know in the past, there's been at least one television station who aired a portion of the video. So if that happens again, what will the district do? What actions will the district take? And what will we do to prevent that from happening?
I'm not aware of any TV station that has used our video. Could you help clarify that for me?
I believe, I can check, but I believe there is a specific television station that aired a portion of the April 18, 2016 meeting.
Yeah, they were here with their own cameras.
Yeah, we can't prevent people from iPads or cameras.
I'm aware of that. I'm speaking of actual, I believe it was actual videotaping. So I will let you know if, I mean, I guess right now, it doesn't really matter. In the past, if anyone has done that, I believe it has happened. But in the future, what will we do if that happens or to prevent that from happening?
You asking me or anybody?
This is board discussion, and administration's here. So we're all here. This would be the time to discuss it. And I have this question. So it's open for anyone who would like to answer.
So if someone used our tape that was, that we made, that we posted, and they used it in an unauthorized manner that we found did not meet our needs, then we would certainly call them and ask them to take it down. And if they refuse to do that, then we'd bring legal action. I'm assuming, it's not going to all be in the policy, but that protects us that it's our tape. Doesn't, other people can tape it. But if it's our tape and it's directly rebroadcast, then we would just try to get them to take it down using whatever remedies we had.
Thank you. And will that be posted on the sign or on the website or YouTube or?
I would think on the YouTube page, we could make sure that we have a disclaimer on there.
Thank you. And then letter G, letter G just doesn't seem to be in alignment with what we actually do here with our setup. The videotaping will be done by one operable camera that will be focused primarily on the board, superintendent of schools, and others seated at the board table, those seated at the school administration's table and the presentation screen. However, other attendees may be inadvertently captured. I think in the last workshop, the entire video, for the most part, was focused on the audience. And we have multiple cameras. So I think this has to be rewarded in order to match what we have. Otherwise, we need to change our recording setup.
Yeah, that should say one operable camera system. And again, the purpose of that paragraph is that it protects the district from someone saying, I realize the board meeting is being taped, but I didn't realize that the crowd was being taped. And so that says that the purpose of the tape is the work that's done up here, but that anyone in the room can be on the tape. But that should say one operable camera system.
System, I would agree with system. And then that last sentence, though, I mean, we are intentionally videoing our presenters. And behind them are the, so in me, from my understanding, rather than however other attendees may be inadvertently captured, something like attendees have a high probability of being, you know, in the recording, or something like that. Because we are not inadvertently, we have one focused directly at the audience.
So let's just take inadvertently out.
Yep.
It may be captured.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Not all in favor, aye? Yeah, so we'll amend the motion. Who made the motion? Ashley, who made the, Bill? Would you, Bill did? So Bill, do you want to amend your motion to include the addition of system and the removal of inadvertently?
Please.
Dave, you'll second that? Okay. All in favor, aye? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries five to one. 8.7.3. Jim?
Yeah, district policy 902, use of school district facilities and equipment. From the second reading, there was one change, and that was under Roman numeral six, the second paragraph, first sentence, it used to read, the use of school facilities must be in the public interest based on board input. From the second reading, that sentence was removed.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to get back on the internet. Could you repeat that? I had asked earlier for an edited copy, and I didn't get that. So could you just please repeat that?
Sure. Roman numeral six on page two, second paragraph, the first sentence of the second paragraph on reading, the second reading said, the use of school facilities must be in the public interest based upon board input from that meeting. We, that was struck. That sentence was struck, and it's no longer there.
Oh, thank you. And I did see that sentence then appear in the procedure. Is that what happened? It was stricken from the policy and it was placed in the procedure?
Yeah, it was struck from both, which is the procedures are, procedures are the next agenda item.
Okay, I could have been looking at a previous copy. Thank you.
So is anything, we'll have a motion in a second, then any discussion? Is there a motion to approve that? Linda, second? Julie, thank you. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Jim, 8.8, use of the district facilities and equipment procedures.
Yes, there were from the last time this was discussed by the facilities committee. From the last meeting here, there were three changes from the district procedures. The first one was on page one. It, down at the bottom of the paragraph, where you see therefore, and the following procedure is intended to deal with the use and costs in a fair and consistent manner. After that sentence, there used to be that same sentence that said the use of school facilities must be in the public interest. And again, based upon board input, that sentence was removed. That's change one. On page two, based upon input from the facilities committee, the very first sentence, with the exception of full-time district employees, was an addition, as well as in that same paragraph, the second to, the second to the last sentence, which begins, full-time district employees are not required to submit an application for facility usage while operating in a supervisory role, was added as well. That was the second change. Another change on page three, number 11, based upon input from the last board meeting, parking lots were added in the first sentence after southwest. And finally, one group was added to the priority groupings on page six. Group three, third priority, added was the word residence.
Okay, is anything, we'll have a motion to approve in a second, then we can have a discussion. Is there a motion to approve those procedures? Is there a second? Thanks, Dave. Any discussion?
So can we go back to the second change you talked about, Jim, up where you, the committee included the language about district employees, full-time employees? I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly. So full-time employees can use the facilities without having to make application for use?
That's correct.
Okay. And where are they then, down in the groupings below? And do they need to be called out under where the groups are specifically bulleted?
I think the feeling was that this language, under rules and regulations, would be clear enough and suffice that they wouldn't be in one of the groups because they're in a supervisory role as a full-time employee.
So what does, I know what I think of in a supervisory role. What does that mean? What's, what are, how are you defining supervisory role?
Number two defines supervisory responsibilities.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And I had the same questions, but I'll ask a few further. In our previous discussion, we talked about the need for determining, for employees, whether the activity was for a district business or personal business. And I'm not seeing any changes here on that order. To me, this sounds like and would provide for any district full-time employee to come in and use the area of their choice that's available for a private party type of thing, unlike where other residents would fall in group three. So is that concern that we had addressed at the previous meeting addressed in this change?
All district employees work for somebody. So if somebody is using a facility in a manner such as a private party or such as you just suggested, Jill, that does not really fit the guidelines of the district, they're responsible to somebody in the district, and it would fall under that purview.
Thank you. But I'm not seeing the guideline here. There's no guideline that says they can't do that because they are, they can be a supervisor of an activity. So there's nothing here is saying that it should be district business. So I would prefer in that first sentence, if we could go back, that first paragraph of the second page, I think, in there, to have some provision that that is speaking of district business. And that anything that is not district business, then full-time employees would fall under the resident provision, even if they're not residents from, of the district. I'd be fine with all district employees being, having personal responsibility there as residents for private issues. But this here should only be for district business, because there are no other organizations, I believe in the city or the county, that would have this kind of provision for their employees, where the employees can come in and use at will the facilities for personal activities, only for district or the organization's activities.
Ashley, could you scroll up to the first page? I'm just wondering, that last sentence in that paragraph, activities detrimental to the purpose of the schools will not be allowed. I mean, when you combine that sentence with what we have on the other side with supervisory assignment, does that? I mean, when you combine that sentence with what we have on the other side with supervisory assignment, does that, I mean, as the board, does that suffice as far as coverage there?
For me, it doesn't. I mean, a birthday party is not going to be detrimental to the purpose of the schools. It's not, it's not saying that school employees cannot use areas for personal reasons.
I see what you mean, Jill, by that, too. I mean, do we, do we list down there under that group number three? If it's not a school activity, do we list residents slash full-time district employees? Is that something you've thought of, is that?
So if we start going down that road, okay, so therefore, if we have a full-time district employee who brings his kids in to shoot basketball, okay? Suddenly, all right, well, they're, they're, it's not an official district activity, so therefore, we are now under the third priority, where the fee will be determined by schedule because you are now a resident, and you want to, the challenge we're running into here is we have a past practice where we've allowed employees of the district to use the facilities. And I'm not aware in seven-plus years of any employee using a facility for a birthday party. Okay? But I knew they do use the facilities, sometimes for the gymnasiums. Sometimes they'll bring their kids in. Sometimes the kids will watch TV while, while people are working. So what we're trying to provide balance for the board is the reality and the past practice of, of what has occurred in the district, to, to create a policy that is consistent with that practice, and yet protects us, or procedure, and protects us moving forward into the future. And I think this, what you have in front of you, does that.
And I guess that is my concern. The past practice has allowed for private use of facilities of groups, and when residents have called to, to reserve a space for that same purpose, they have been denied. So I, I see that this is problematic, and if we're going to talk about going down roads, I think we've been going down the wrong road, and it's time to put some boundaries and some barricades along there and say, this would be the correct purpose of the use of the facilities that the community owns.
I'm not aware of any, you just made a statement that somebody called something last spring for an identical party or something. That is not, I'm not aware of that. I've talked to our facilities scheduler about that. That is, I'm not aware of that at all. Again, as your superintendent, we need to have a procedure in place that meets our current reality for our community, and that's the recommendation we have before you.
Others have any comments? We have, in our past votes, deemed that our employees are in a different class. We've allowed them to attend sporting events with no fees. We've all voted for that, so just like any other procedure list, it's not going to be perfect, but I do think it is the balance between letting the employees that have access use that within reason, and then it delineates who, who else can use it as well.
I did have one further question, and I understand that point, but then a, a sports event is a district event. So I don't think that applies either as a personal thing. If we look down, maybe it's, it's in the fee, or no, it's in this part, sorry. Group two, I know I had asked this question last time. Organized local nonprofit youth groups, does that include church groups, church youth groups? Or would church youth groups fall under group three, local religious organizations for rec or social purposes? Because technically, they are nonprofit youth groups, so I just wanted to be clear with that distinction.
I think that wouldn't, you could determine that, and then that would become the practice or the procedure. I don't think, obviously, I think there was a difference in intent, or you want to have the, the second one listed in group three. So I think it probably needs to be understanding for the facilities person when they're, when they're doing that. But I think our, our intent was, or the intent originally on, on these procedures and, and these groupings was that there is, there would be two different things. There's an organized local, and then there would be the other one in, in the third priority.
You are delineating local as opposed to the religious organization, where I was picking up on the youth. We're talking about youth groups, so do we want to give all youth equal opportunity to access the facilities? Or do we want to relegate them to have to pay? It would be my preference to have youth groups of church nonprofits also in group two because it benefits the youth of the community.
My interpretation is they are a nonprofit, and if it's a church nonprofit, and they're a youth group, they would be in two.
So in two, thank you.
Just add, we'll go back and then, including religious youth groups, just so it's crystal clear in number two there. We'll just add those words. So that five years from now, two years from now, people understand what you're talking about. Okay? Other questions? So who made the motion? Someone amend it? You second it? So, who did? So Bill, could you amend that to include nonprofit youth groups, including religious youth groups?
That word exactly.
Yeah, yeah. So all in favor, I? Anyone opposed? Five to one. Nine point one, Kathy. Thanks, Jim. World's best workforce.
We talked a little bit about that. High school graduation rates as a district, and then how you measure college and career readiness. And districts really were able to determine college and career readiness measurement themselves, and then MDE has added a few more things for next year. So I'm going to show you, we did not make the goals as on our pathways, and we are moving forward, revising plans to increase the likelihood of achieving those goals. So the first goal, all students ready for kindergarten. If you remember, last year, we did make this goal. So Elbertly area schools set a goal that seventy percent of children will enter kindergarten as, with demonstrated proficiency as measured by FAST. We got dinged a little bit last year because we changed from Ames Webb to FAST. And so we used FAST last year, we use FAST this year. We are at sixty-six point eight percent of kindergarteners who are considered to have met the K readiness scale on the FAST testing. Jenny Hanson reported at district curriculum committee last night, she, when she has time, dealing with voluntary pre-K. She's going to disaggregate, hopefully, the data from the students who attended early childhood programming here in the district to see what the percentage of those students who indicated readiness. Third grade achieving grade level literacy. So our goal was eighty percent of all children will be on target for third grade reading proficiency as measured by the MCA. So as a district, we set that goal at eighty percent. As a district, we hit seventy point one percent. I also included the breakdown by schools, where you see Sibley seventy point one, Lakeview seventy eight point six, Hawthorne sixty-two point nine, and Helverson seventy point seven.
And I want to draw special attention to Helverson, because that's typically often the, the school in the district that people, you know, have the most concern about because of, due to its poverty level. And that's, that's the school that the board really started the, the pre-K program a couple of years ago with our literacy dollars. So though we're not at that eighty percent, Helverson's a good news story on this line.
Ninety percent of Elbertly area students will achieve their growth target. Again, this is not proficiency. These are students who went from wherever they were, they made a full year's growth. So we have medium growth and high growth, so this is not proficiency. These are students who are growing, which I think if you talk to educators, we have for years talked about, let's use growth and not necessarily that bar. And so you have a, a good target, ninety percent achieve a year's growth, hit their growth target. We can only do years that are consecutive using MCA data. So you'll see there's no growth targets for tenth grade, there's no growth targets for third grade. So it's only consecutive years. And we did not hit ninety percent. Our most concerning, of course, under growth results is math, thirty-five point seven. And I looked up today just to be sure I had the right proficiency. We had forty-four percent of our sixth graders hit the proficiency, which was below state average. So that's telling us that some students are doing well and doing fine, but they're still not growing by a year. So again, a concern of ours. Elbertly area schools set a goal that ninety percent of students will graduate in four years. And as you've heard many times, we have four-year, five-year, and six-year graduation rates. But certainly, we would like students to graduate ninety percent at four years. Our district goal, our district hit seventy-five point seven. The high school hit eighty-six point six, which was down from eighty-eight point seven. And our ALC is up a little from twenty-two percent last year to twenty-three point eight percent. And granted, those are students who just graduate in four years. So at our ALC, you will see students graduate up until the age of twenty-one. But that is just students who graduate in four years. And most students do not enter our ALC till at least the first semester is over in ninth grade. We have a few who enter then, and then we have more who enter ten, eleven, twelve. So we rarely have any individual student who's at the ALC for four years. So they come to us from Elbertly and surrounding districts. And then the MMR percentage, you, we earned twenty-five points because we did have an acceptable graduation rate for Elbertly High School, but we did not for the ALC. I think our number was too low for them to even project for us, so. So what are we doing? Well, one of the things I've added in the full report is new region ten data to our goals, which has very specific achievement gap information for us by student group. And so our buildings are starting to look at that, and that's new data out from MDE. We have made revisions to our QCOM coordinator positions to transition to instructional coaches. We are working on the gym night instructional coaching model. Our secondary staff have, coaches have taken a look with MDE at what's called agents of change. And today, we had a, a day with our K-12, I'll call her math specialist, Chris Quisley, if she's still in the audience. She met with Julie Eaton and really spent a significant day looking at where we are mathematic practice-wise at Southwest Middle School, and more in particular, where we are with the standards aligned with our curriculum after our visit to St. Louis Park. We definitely have some work to do there. We did a science standard review, Mary Jo did, with our elementary teachers. Anna Nordlaken did some vocabulary work this summer with the science standards. So we are, are going to be doing this deep look at math standards at Southwest Middle School. We are bringing in Nancy Remmert for year two of our English Language Arts alignment. I can tell you that a group of us attended a conference at New Prague last week from the high school, and it was somewhat gratifying to see Byron, who presented quite a bit, and they, they're kind of on the cutting edge in our, our award-winning school district. Very clear that that's their path as well, is to take a look deeply at the standards, and is our curriculum aligned to the standards? I had a person at the district curriculum committee who commented the other night, we're teaching to the test, and I'd like to reiterate, we teach to the standards, and the assessments are based on the standards. So Byron talked about there in year three of looking at the standards in their school district. We are looking at improving our foundation's coursework and model this year. Erin Miller-Barracki has really spent a significant amount of time. We are hoping to take her, before she has her baby, up to Apple Valley to take a look at the high school reading model that is being incorporated there. And then in special education, we have Carrie Trow this year, who is working halftime as a behavior coach with our special education teachers, and in particular, our ASD students. So we've made visits to St. Louis Park. We were going to go to Alexandria this past weekend, but the weather certainly didn't cooperate with us. And as I said, we're looking to send Erin and some other teachers, possibly some other eighth-grade teachers, to Eastview. One of the things that we've, we learned and, and have heard in many places over the last six months and heard last week is it's really important for school personnel to recommit to what they're planning on doing. So recommit to the D four PLC model. Jackie Cromwell-Wolson is really doing a lot of work on that front, and will be working more with our monthly learning team. This last month, she really led the charge of the learning team, along with our instructional coaches, to deal with our three standing agenda items. We are meeting with our elementary and secondary teacher leader and admin groups. And I can tell you, Steve Kovac walked away from the secondary group last week saying, "This is really one of the best meetings I've had with teacher leaders on, on how to move forward." I know Mary Jo is doing the same thing with the elementary group. So, and then we're, we're also considering action planning models similar to what Sibley is doing. So those are the revisions to the plan. Whoops, I guess that's the next piece. So the full plan will be posted to the website shortly. We are working with Gail Brownlow on the gifted and talented portion, which is being added. QCOM is being added. The district curriculum committee as an assessment review committee is being added. They reviewed the assessments in the fall. So there are a few more pieces to the plan that we'll add throughout the year and post, so. Questions?
I noticed, maybe you could revisit the graduation rate slide again?
Sure.
So it has slipped, and could you let us know again what revisions are made to address this particular point?
Sure. So one of the things, we know that students graduate based on the credits earned. And so one of the things Mark did last year was go to a quarter system to see if that would help students who fail a course not feel like I'm a whole semester behind. We still have a large number of students in credit recovery. We've spread credit recovery out over three days now, and we have busing again for year two. So it will go until four o'clock, and tutoring remains this year. Mark has four teachers who are tutoring at the high school, three days a week from after-school. school until four, and then the bus departs at four.
A lot of these things that Kathy mentioned are, have been implemented in the last two years. The other thing is the academies for eighth and ninth grade. We are not going to see the results of, especially the academies, for two, three years yet. So I think between Kathy and Mark at the high school, they have got great plans in place to help us with the, the graduation rate. And I know that the ALC movement in Riverland has had a positive impact on, on enrollment and, and attendance, and you can see a bit of that on that slide as well.
And is the academy showing improved completion rates for eighth and ninth graders?
So I haven't taken a look at those credits, but that's certainly something we should look at. Thank you. Yep. Anything else? So the last thing is reviewing, Career and Technical Education is under reviewing their curriculum this year. Several of our teachers are on overload. It's, as you know, as a nation, we really are focusing more on, on careers. This last summer, we sent two teachers up to the Department of Ed, two of our FACS teachers, Family and Consumer Science, to learn about what this is called Teacher Cadet Academy. And so what they'd like to do is they have a course right now called Working with Children, and they're going to expand it to a two-hour block next year. There's curriculum, that it's a national curriculum in 38 states, and it will really allow students to explore working with children beyond what they've done in the past, which is some elementary ed and some childcare, really expand the full scope of what does, what does education look like. And I, I'm reminded when I sat next to a parent the other day who, she said, her son would like to be a high school principal. He's a freshman in college, but he doesn't want to be a teacher. So how, how does he make that happen? And as a parent, she said, I don't understand the education world, and so had a really great conversation. So this has some unique pieces to it. Jeannie Garbers, who is, got a vocational license, Career and Tech Ed license. The Department of Ed is working through Minsky to try to do some credit similar to Project Lead the Way on this, but they just don't have everything aligned yet. But regardless of that, it's still a program we could offer regardless of the credit, and it would expose our 11th and 12th graders. They could earn two semester credits, one hour in class or two hours in class possibly for one week, and then two hours out in the community and the schools for the next week. So that's course number one. And the other course is a video game design or coding course. We're looking at two pieces right now. We're looking at Game It, which is from a Minnesota company called Stemfuse. And then there's another organization called mouse.org, which is being supported by the Department of Education, and it really is beginning coding for students, beginning principles of coding, logical design, using the gaming platform. Kenneth Griswold has been really pushing the mouse product because it's one we can use on our Chromebooks. Stemfuse has some of those features, but they're still working on this Game It. One of the concerns that came up was DCC is, is the students playing video games during class. It is not. It is the coding of that lot, the, the structures for, behind applications. The mouse.org, interestingly enough, has a national competition for students to develop apps to meet a social need, and I think Byron had some students participate last year. Max Jeffrey is, been digging in deep to take a look at this, trying to get a hold of a elementary media specialist who works with elementary teachers on coding, and she's offering a day up at St. Kate's here in another week or two. So these are the two courses that are being proposed right now. These are just nine through 12 courses. We still are looking at six, seven, eight here in December. Mr. Grossglass is being very persistent in trying to get registration done earlier this year, so we bring these forward at this point. Questions?
So does the Game It, the coding course, meet kind of a math requirement if needed?
So that's a good question. In the legislation, it does allow for that. We, I don't believe this one aligns enough with the standards, but I asked Gary Schindler last fall, is there anybody in the state that they're piloting or working with to, in particular, to get that Algebra II credit? That seems to be a tough one. So we, we are still looking, but thank you. Yes.
Okay. Thanks for your efforts.
Thank you.
Nine point two, the last item. Dr. Funk and I have been meeting with Janice Jeffries and Al Helgerson over several months with the sole purpose of trying to see if we can get some more teacher engagement, and one of the ideas was to have a teacher report at the board, much like we have a superintendent report and a school board member report and a student report. And so they're open to that, and they had some questions about it, and so they're, they're meeting with teachers, and I thought I should bring it here before we got too far down the track, just to let you know, A, we're having those discussions and see if you had any questions or concerns about it. So we don't have, we haven't picked a time when it might start. Some of the questions we've asked them and they've asked us is, who, would it be, would it have to be the same teacher every month? Would it be union-type issues? Would it be curriculum-type issues? Could it be some of each? How would that work? Would they be up here the whole time? So they, those are all good questions that they have, and so we're trying to work together so that we can get the teacher's voice up here on some of the things we discuss and hear from the teachers on a monthly basis. So before we went too much further, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that, see if you have any questions, comments, suggestions? Anybody? No?
No, I'd like the idea, but kind of looking at it, since the agenda's been out, a lot of things have been going through my mind, so, you know, I would just caution to proceed slowly on it and, and work through the potential issues. And I still want to have a, have some opportunity to get some more thought to this particular subject. It's important to hear their voice, but also there's ramifications as well.
Other comments, questions?
Any, you know, maybe a mini-agenda type of thing, so it goes on our board minutes, not just an open, like we have our community forum, just where they, you know, bring up some points, like I said, maybe pre-review that we have a chance to think about ahead of time, in case we have questions.
Okay.
I think it's an interesting concept that we could look further into. I guess I wouldn't want to place any undue stress upon our teachers, but I would want to be able to, you know, make sure that it's the teacher voice that we're hearing, and I don't know, in that venue, if that would be something they would want to do or not, but I think, you know, getting the teacher's feedback would be key for me.
Julie, or Linda, any thoughts or concerns? Student members over there, any comments? Okay. So we'll, we'll keep meeting and I'll keep you updated on kind of how we're, how it's progressing. So I, I can tell you that working with Janice and Al has been great, and they're, they're interested, and they, they want things to go well, and so they're open to ideas, and they've been very positive about it, so I've enjoyed meeting with them and working with them. Okay? We're adjourned. Thanks.